Hey, John.
There's lots of people here. This is gonna be really boring. No, of course not.
Never.
Good evening. I'd like to call the special call meeting of the Beaufort County School Board for April the 20th, 2022 to order. Ms. Johnson, will you please call the roll?
Mrs. Kirby.
Here.
Mr. Hill.
Here.
Mr. Daniels.
Here.
Mrs. Harrison.
Here.
Mr. Holbrook.
Here.
Dr. Mealy.
Here.
Mr. Nelms.
Here.
Madam Chair, you have a call.
Thank you, ma'am. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
I have a motion by Ms. Harrison. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Nelms. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Dr. Bergen, you had a couple announcements that you wanted to make?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you for taking first of all, in person, privilege, let you know the toddler is in labor. So baby Stella wasn't due till next week. But hence, I want you to understand, I'm asking you at the request of the mom and the dad, the whole family bubble is masking, just as an extra precaution. So I hope to hold a baby granddaughter, if not later tonight, but tomorrow at some point. For 20 years since I had a baby, I've been very, very excited, so.
Congratulations.
Thank you for that.
Gives all your money.
His granddaughter will want for nothing.
Well, we'll expect to see her at the next meeting.
That's right.
All dressed up.
Yes, ma'am. And then I sent y'all an email, but because of the timeliness of it, I'm gonna go ahead and send a sign-up sheet around. I mentioned to the board previously that I'm gonna do end-of-year staff meetings in all 21 schools. And I have those scheduled. It's a fast race, you know, to do in some weeks. I'm doing six or eight, in some weeks I'm only doing a couple. I had to work them all into my schedule between now and the end of the school year. So this'll come around. There's two columns here on the right, just the maximum of the two board members on, I'm gonna give it a school. Three, we got a call. We will be discussing business. I'm going to review the strategic plan and the budget and ask 30 questions. HR staff is gonna attend with me in case there are salaries, specific questions that individuals can avail themselves to staff on the spot. And I just wanna stay in touch with, you know, our teachers and our staff. Bus drivers and food service workers generally can't and aren't available to attend these after-school meetings, so I'm gonna set up a special time to meet with those groups, and I'll let you know when those are scheduled. So this is gonna come around. Two columns over here, you can just write your name in. And if you're not prepared tonight, that's absolutely fine. Per the email, Diana will keep this master list. And so when it tickles your fancy, you can contact Diana. She'll just schedule that.
Okay.
That's all I had to say. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Dr. Bergen. You know, we're here tonight. I wanted to preface this for everyone who's watching that doesn't understand what we're doing. What we're doing here tonight is for a school board member policy only. It does not affect school or student codes in any way. What we are doing is to combine various of school board, various sources of school board procedure into one location. This was actually started two years ago when Mr. Lemey was the chair, and it got pushed aside because of COVID, and I just thought it was a good time for us to finish it up. And Ms. Harrison's request, we're doing it as a work session as opposed to breaking it up over a course of many months. So has everyone had the chance to review everything? Now, my thought was, we have Barry and Diana has so kindly set us up to where we can just go ahead, go through and make the changes, like what we did at our work session, if that's okay with y'all. And we can go ahead and try to get as close to a final document tonight as we can. Now, on page one, what you had, and Dr. Mealy, you had originally worked on these and upgraded them from here. Because if I'm not mistaken, Ms. Johnson actually went, was so kind enough to go through and get exact dates of when they were last updated. And these were actually last updated in 1997, so it's definitely time to look at these. My first thought was where we have a school board bylaws. Because we talked about how our attorney has said we do not need bylaws anymore, but they can just be, we can have standard procedures. So would y'all want to call this bylaws, policies, and procedures?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I have no, yeah.
Would that be fine with everyone?
Yeah.
Everybody in county is gonna see how bad my typing skills are. Now, we have a list of revised dates, so I'll fill that in. But we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, and then nine. Do you think me, the people, know how to spell adopt? Do we count, since we didn't actually adopt, or even, do we count the revision in 2020 as a revision?
Because we really never.
We never acted on it, did we? Am I correct?
Could've reviewed.
Definitely could. Let's go put me on another page.
Madam Chair, if the board wants, I know you're trying to get everything on the paper tonight to get it approved.
Uh huh.
If you want, I can clean the document up, make certain things smaller, make it look.
Okay.
Better, and of course, still send it out to the whole board, just to, in case anybody had any issues with it. But the information, important stuff, would actually be there on the paper.
Okay, perfect, perfect. Are we looking, is that looking? And some of us do know. You know, page one, did anybody have anything to add, change? What I thought, and this is just whatever, again, this is done by consensus. It's not just my thought, or just any one particular member's thought. Since we're citing the Code of Virginia here, and just using it as a reference point, that would be a good place to put Beaufort County policies. List those underneath the state code. So that way, it would be in one document.
You're already talking the whole governance?
The policies would, yeah, I think, yeah, the whole policy B. What we got was like 12 different policies, when the, what was in the email.
Yes, my 12 policies, currently 12 policies, two regulations. Of course, I know we're trying to incorporate all the regulations into actual policies, but until that's approved by the board, when they come up at the air regular meetings, currently, right now, there are 12 policies and two regulations under board governance.
Let me ask a question, just to ask. Why don't we try to take this and put it into policy? Like, you know, because there's a lot of stuff in here that it's already part of our policy. It might be worded a little bit differently, but there's a lot of things in here that are already part of our policy. Now, I guess I'm asking you all, would it be better to have this document, our norms document, and Section B of our policy manual, or just whatever we want, put in Section B? And there it stays until another board, or this board decides, we don't want it there anymore. Then it would only be one, we'd only be looking at one document.
Well, that's what we're trying to achieve with this too, and doing it as policy. I mean, it's, what do y'all think?
We've changed the title to policies and procedures. It certainly, I certainly agree, putting it in, all in one document would just be, to me, really smooth and easy access for us. So I like, Madam Chairman, your ideal of putting, you know, our policies within this booklet here.
So this would become Section B. Is that what you're saying? Is that what I'm understanding?
It would be a combination of Section B and the Virginia State Code. And of course, we have some things that we haven't adopted into policy, but that we are following, such as social media, because on this, the last time these bylaws were adopted, you didn't have internet access like you do now.
So this would be, though, still a separate doc, separate from Section B?
Right, but Section B would be included in this.
In this. And would this be housed where Section B is, then?
It'd be housed as a separate document, because I'm thinking, we've had three new members come on in the last year. And I know I sat in on Dr. Bergen's orientation with Mr. Holbrook and Mr. Nelms. And I just thought it would be so nice if he just had one thing to handle, because I know they were inundated with information that day. We all remember going through the orientation too.
Right.
And just have, just a reference. This is just basically a reference for any new member coming on, or a fresh course for us veterans that have been here a while.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
Was your thought to put this in, house this in board docs, in the same place where the current norms and protocols documented is housed? That way, it's still all there, and you still have the policies over there?
Yes.
Yeah.
Is that okay?
Yeah, I like that.
Is that okay with everyone? Yeah, on page one, underneath where we reference the Virginia code, do we want to put policies there? Section B of the policies?
When you say page one.
The very first page.
The very first page, right after this sheet.
Oh, okay.
Well, actually, it says page two at the bottom, I'm sorry.
All right. I think that's in a.
I guess if we're gonna do that way, that's the place to put it.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, so can I just make a reference to that?
Yeah, and then I will, I'll plug them in. Yes.
Okay, so.
Did you say number 12 of those?
There are currently 12 policies and two regulations. But that will change when policies are updated and those regs are incorporated into those policies.
Thank you.
And then pages three, four, and five are just your table of contents. And of course, that's gonna be subject to change as we go through this. Did anyone have any changes with page six? Should we also reference the Beaufort County policies on page six as well? Since that's talking about legal references. I'm getting there.
I don't know about add two, maybe like, yeah, maybe say reference, see page two.
Okay. Or do we need this, since we referenced it on page two?
Yeah, I think so.
So we can eliminate this page?
Yeah, I think so.
So take it out completely?
Yes. Since we've already made references on the other pages. Fine with that. Page seven. Powers and duties in the school board. We, um, let's see. In are the norms, governance norms and protocols that we did at the work session. If you actually numbered them, numbers one through six. Were kind of, are about of our opinions. We will hear each other's opinions, but ultimately act as one. The chair designated will speak as the official voice of the board. We'll be mindful of different roles. We will be aware of different roles. We'll be focused on our work as a board. Maintain open communication. Do we wanna put that here, underneath a school board shell, the powers and duties?
I think we need to, that truly is a quote of the law right there.
Uh huh.
That, so I think if we wanna add that, we would have to make, to me, some sort of notation after number 10, that that isn't part of the regulate, you know, the actual code of Virginia.
Okay.
Because one through 10 are, come straight out of the code.
Okay, so, okay, I see what you're saying.
I don't think there's anything wrong with adding those. We just have to figure, you know, I think it needs a subtitle to make sure that it's, somebody isn't confusing what we have developed with the actual code of Virginia. And putting it in bold letters, bolding that wording too, would make that distinction.
Or actually, if you look on page 11, as it was, there's really good changes on this one. Right. Orientation of new, I had made a note when I was reviewing this at home. Possibly where you have section three, compensation of school boards, section four, orientation of new board members. I thought about maybe putting in a section five there with those six.
Well, the compensation, again, the compensation is our policy BHD.
Right, but that's section three, and then we have section four.
Right.
And then the first six norms and protocols would be section five. And then bump them all up, or we can put them here, whatever.
It would seem to make more sense to me.
Which, which place?
To have it there, because that's during the orientation process.
Okay.
You know, it seems to me that that would make it easier for the person coming on board, that, oh, here's what I, is expected of me.
So that would be, it's all messed up now.
So that would be section five.
Oh, shoot.
But anywhere, I just wanna make sure, and I'm sorry, I've had a really, really long day today. If we, if we do that as section five, are we, the compensation of the school board is already a policy. So are we gonna repeat that here, or we're just gonna refer to policy BHD?
What do y'all think?
I think it needs to be, I think that wording needs to be there. It's my, my thinking, if that's the question.
But does that duplicate, I mean.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking. It duplicates BHD. Diana, that's past, I asked you to do that here.
BHD is one of the policies that Diana sent us. Exactly. And so, if that's gonna be put in, do we also need to repeat it here? We don't. I agree. What do you all think?
We, there is a lot of repetition within this document, so if we can.
Clean it up a little bit.
Yeah.
So we're gonna let the policy stand for that.
So let the policy at the beginning stand, and we'll take it out right here then?
Yeah.
Is that what we wanna do?
It's just repetition.
But the policy will be word for word, is how it's written?
Exactly.
At the beginning.
Okay.
So we're eliminating section three.
Correct, because it's taken up.
So section four will then become section three.
Right. And then what you were talking about, become section four then, correct, Madam Chair?
Correct.
That's the norms.
Curse is mid on me. Ms. Johnson, will it help you if I highlight what we need to have added in?
You can do that.
I know how to do that much.
You've got this.
Okay. So we're back up to. Okay, so these are the legal. This is state code, so we're gonna leave that there. Okay. Definition, authority, and bylaws. Which would be page nine, but it didn't have a page number on it, I noticed. My only comment with this is like, we have his, her, could we change that to their?
It's either their, or it's a, it's a difference to the, to the mail.
That's what we started doing.
Is that, is that what we're doing with our, with our updates? So make it consistent across the board? I had that one there. Tried to catch as many of them as I could.
Madam Chair, if you just want me to make a note, I can search all his or her in the document.
And then wouldn't you have him and her, and herself and his self?
I can search all of those, if, for the sake of time, if you just.
Okay. You're so kind.
I try.
I did notice that this was a medical thing. And then we go to 10.
Madam Chairman.
Yes, ma'am.
On the bottom of page nine, where it's talking about qualification of members, I believe, except for the first, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, 10 words, that all, starting with the word at in the first sentence, all the way to the end of that section, where it ends with school board, is a repeat of policy BBBA.
Okay, I see the at, I don't see where it comes.
Next page, page 10.
You said BBBA.
BBBA, I thought.
Are we talking within the code?
I'm sorry, yes, the part where it says 22.1-29.
Uh huh.
I, is, does somebody have that available?
Well, have, not, not actuality, though, are we actually referencing this code at the beginning? Is that one of the codes that's referenced?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
So just eliminate the whole code?
Yeah, we don't need it. We don't need it.
Okay. Then we have another code down here too.
Hold on one second. So you just eliminated 22.1-29, is that right? Right. All right. But the section one, number of school board members, remains.
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay, I just wanna make sure, okay.
Yeah.
I mean, you all, I'm just thinking, if we have it in a policy, we don't need it repeated again, right?
I agree, yeah. I'm just making sure that we're not deleting something we're.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm just double checking to make sure.
All right, so are we gonna come back to these policies? Or should we visit them while we're talking about it?
Well, you can visit them if you want to, and then we can decide what we wanna deal with them.
Yeah. So the only question I have, when you read through BBBA, it talks about, at the time of appointment or election to office, each member, blah, blah, blah. What about during times where the lines are redrawn? I mean, does that just flow into election laws, and it doesn't need to be in here? I mean, because like, we, some of us have that coming up, where the lines have actually been withdrawn, or withdrew. I mean, because like, we, some of us have that coming up, where the lines have actually been withdrawn, or withdrew, or not.
Redrawn.
Redrawn, and that may affect that person next election. It won't current seat or time. But I didn't know if that needed to be in here, or if that's just part of election laws and we leave that.
I think that's part of election laws, and we need to keep that separate.
I just wanted to mention it.
That's a good question, do.
I'm, I'm just scrolling back up to see if that policy that we just deleted, it was listed up here, if not, I'll make a note to list it up here. It disappeared on me. Well, Ms. Johnson, will you make a note to double check the codes and make sure the ones that were in the original one? That they're all listed up here? Okay, so term of office, then this is going to be another code that we want to make sure is listed with codes.
And that's different from our policy, because the policy.
So then you want to keep that one there?
Well, you can put it wherever, I'm just saying, we have a policy BBBC, but that speaks to the oath and the establishing qualifications. It's a little different from that.
And this is just for the elections?
Right.
So leave that code there? Or be consistent, put that code with the other codes?
I, I think all codes should go together, that's just my thought. If we're going to say a code section. Keep the code section.
And then where it says members of the, serve as defined by the code of Virginia, section 24.2-223? Here it says in pop-ups, it's really as mine does. So then we'll eliminate this from here. Yeah, we're moving along here. Section three. Orientation of new board members, professional development for members. The first line, the board and the superintendent, do you want to say the board and/or the superintendent? Or new, and I had a problem where it said for newly appointed board members.
Where is that?
On, on, on the first line, at the la, the last two words of the first line, underneath orientation. Or do we want to keep it here, since we're talking about the orientation, but? Oh, no orientation for the new board member, okay, never mind.
Yeah, so that's speeding it.
Yeah, that, that's right, I was, I was reading it as, um, professional development.
I guess too, if we want to get really picky, should we change newly appointed to just new board members? Because some are going to be elected.
Good catch.
So you're still kind of appointed by the people?
Yeah, but, 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 yes, yeah. So, um, let's see. And since we're trying to combine this into one document, so a copy. Of the bylaws, policies, and procedures? See where I am? So then, do we need the, the policies and regulations? To combine it all into one?
Yeah, just.
Okay, how's that look? Now, right here, the last paragraph on page 10, which is this paragraph right here.
All members.
All members shall be encouraged and permitted to attend conferences and meetings that will contribute to a better understanding of the role of a board member. Don't we have to do one at, one a year?
Yeah, I was going to say, we need to.
So we, we need to change that, yeah. So the school board members.
Are required.
Are required? Is that?
Well, I still think we should say, they shall be encouraged and permitted to attend conferences. That's kind of broad there, if you want it to.
Required, and then they're not required for what?
But also required to.
Minimum of what?
So board members are required to attend one a year, but encouraged to attend others?
Yeah, awesome.
Good.
Should be conference slash workshop?
Conferences.
I'm blowing my fingers around.
You could just say professional development, attend professional development.
And one professional development course?
And that, that will contribute to a better understanding, that way it takes in everything, conference, Zoom, webinar, whatever it could be.
And is encouraged to attend others? How's that sound?
So, doesn't the conferences or whatever have to be tied to certain credits?
As long as it's professional development that counts. Um, VSB A keeps up with ones that they do, that go towards your credits. And that's, you know, you've seen the thing I give you every year, and it tells you your points, I think they call it points, not credits, but, yeah, any professional development counts towards your requirement per code.
Okay, but it doesn't have to be VSB A?
It does not have to be VSB A.
Is that, and is that concurrent with a calendar year or a school year? So should we make a note there?
We should indicate that, yes.
So one professional development course.
I, I believe.
Per school year?
I believe that's correct, if you want to put that in, but maybe highlight it and let me double check. I think it's a school year, but I don't want to tell you wrong.
That's what I thought, that's what I thought we had talked about before. You were telling me I had to do one.
Yeah, I, I would like to double check, so if, if it ends up being a calendar year, if the board is okay, I will just change the wording to say calendar year instead of per school year.
Absolutely.
So how does that wording sound, though? All members are required to attend one professional development course per school year, and is encouraged to attend others that will contribute to a better understanding of the role of school board member?
And, and, or.
That is what you call.
Or.
That is a run-on sentence.
Okay, so tell me what you want me to do.
Uh, the whole thing, you could put a period after board member, and then.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, this thing's jumping around on me, hold on, I'm trying to figure it out. Board member.
You could put a period after board member.
Here?
Yes, where it says role of a school board member, put a period there, and then I would cross out or provide general professional development, and just put professional development will be provided to any member without cost. Do you want me to repeat that?
I think I got it.
Okay.
Without cost to them, because it's going to cost somebody.
Without cost to the member. This is what it was said.
It's going to cost somebody.
That's true. That's true.
Okay, now, this is where we said that we're going to put in the first six. From the norms and protocols. Ms. Johnson, I'm going to highlight right here. Because that's missing the little section symbol. Anybody have any comments on this section? And the annual organizational meeting?
Uh, the only thing I would tell you there is, I'm sorry, do you have anybody else?
Please talk.
No, go on.
Please.
Workshop.
I'm sorry, what?
It's a workshop, so talk ahead.
The first paragraph under duties of the chairman is the same as BCB, so I don't know if you want to repeat that.
Okay, well, okay, so we're going down a little bit further, okay, I was looking at the organizational meeting.
Yeah, no.
Nothing, nothing there. Okay, and I noticed there was a typo right here, so I'm going to fix that, I can handle it, I can handle putting a dash in. Okay, and now what, do, do duties of the chair, same as what?
Yeah, that first paragraph is the same, it, it is, is virtually the same paragraph that exists in BCB as I.
Okay, so take out this per, paragraph, and then the chairman, as a member of the school board, has a vote on it, so take that out too.
I think Diana can, if you would just check that.
So delete that, and then leave this general blur up there, is that correct?
Yeah.
Yes, unless that repeats it too, I, I didn't think it did, but.
So I just want to make sure, so we shouldn't refer to the policies in taking this out, or, I mean, because.
Make reference to the policy?
I'm just asking that question.
Okay.
S, C policy.
Yeah, C policy.
Oh, you could do that, you could do that, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I'm just worried that if a board comes in and changes the policy, and then.
That's a good idea, C policy, whatever, I think that's an excellent idea, actually.
Pol, well, so what was the policy?
Uh, BCB.
BCB?
And we, yeah, I, I think Mr. Hill has a point, you could do that for each one.
Then we do that in a couple of chapters.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, we'll, we'll go back to.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea, yeah.
Um, let's see. Now, here's something I wanted to ask you, when we're talking about the duties of the chairman. Or should we put chair, have it chair, chairperson?
Chairperson.
Oh, my God, can we just do chair?
You can do chair. I'll take you as one. Chair is fine.
And the norms, um, and protocols, number two. The chair will speak as the official voice of the board, do we want, do we need to add that within that specific duty list?
I think anything that's in there that is your specific duty should be there.
So. So we had, uh, and for me, for reference, I numbered each one of these, so if I call them off, I number, that's just my crazy numbering system. But the second one is the chair will speak for, as the official voice of the board, and then number 15, it talks about, um, the chair being the one to speak to the media. Or chair or designate.
On behalf of the board.
On behalf of the board. Do you understand my numbering system here, so if I put the number there, then you'll understand?
Was your numbering system just for the first portion, you know how they're ruined?
No, I numbered every one of them.
You started with one, and every section goes down.
I went on down to 21.
All right, I can, I can handle that.
I, I'll give you my notes too.
Yeah, that makes sense.
So norms two, which would be speak as the official voice of the board. And 15, um, making reference to media.
Want that as a separate section, Madam Chair, or continue the list?
Just go, like, number, number four, number five would be norm number two, number six.
Continue number, continue with number five, okay, gotcha.
Duties of the vice chair. What are you supposed to do?
Just sit up here and spot for it.
And we're going to eliminate, no offense, Mar, Marcus, if we're doing chair, we're going to do vice chair.
That's in the same policy.
I was going to say, it's similar to BCCs.
Yeah, it's listed there too, should we just refer to that, BCB?
Is, is it, is it the fine which? So C, B, CPS. What was it?
BCC.
And so eliminate that and just leave it there?
It's a BCB, right?
BCB.
BCB, I'm sorry.
Georgia.
But, 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 did, duties of the chair was BCB, is it the same policy?
It's the same, same.
It's the next paragraph.
School board officers.
Okay, I take the word for it.
Okay, so eliminate, eliminate that whole paragraph?
There's a bunch of Bs and Cs in there.
Yeah, you can eliminate that whole paragraph.
Eliminate that whole paragraph? Duties of the clerk, is that under the policies as well? Yes, sir.
It's a little bit more than what's in the policy.
Just a question on the duties of the chair. There are very few leave requests that are required to be approved by the chair, when those need to be approved by contract or law, it would be the chair, but the way it's written, it would, it could be implied that all leave requests have to be approved by you, and they don't. It could be, that's what the board wants, but by law, by contract, you don't approve all my leave requests.
As appropriate, as necessary, as required.
When required.
When, when you say leave.
If I'm on sick leave, it, it, it's, it's, there's no approval process for the chair to sign off that I was sick. When I take a personal day, there's no approval process.
Right, okay, so leave of absence, is that what this policy was talking? I mean, I don't know, because I was not here in 19, whatever that was.
1994?
Well, I'm, I'm thinking too, the chair has to sign like title grants, right, co-sign title grants with you, like Title I, she has to sign that. Uh, so that's a legal document.
There are certain legal documents that there needs, not all, not necessarily always.
This is leave request.
Was it leave, were we talking about leave requests, or were we talking about legal documents?
I'm talking about my personal.
He's talking about number two.
Oh, he's talking about number two, I'm so sorry, okay.
I put the words in as required.
Okay. But should we be a little bit more specific then?
As required.
Y'all tell me what you want to do, this is our document, not.
I mean, that looks fine the way. As required.
So, as, what's an example of where, I think that would help me to better understand an example.
I think we leave it as it is, and then when that time comes, it's written, it's already approved, we're not changing it. And therefore, it leaves interpretation of leave, period. And so, now, we can't, whatever's legal, from an HR standpoint, that's done through HR, that's day-to-day operations. But any other types of leave, leave of absence, longe, I mean.
Well, we know the board has to be involved in that, but if Dr. Bergen can just help enlighten me in terms of an example.
May I offer a suggestion? As required per the superintendent's contract, because that may be different for every superintendent?
Can I have an example?
I'm sorry, Georgia.
I may be on, I may be on personal leave tomorrow to hold my granddaughter.
Exactly.
That does not require prior approval. I've never sought, I don't intend to seek approval, to go do a job somewhere else, but by contract, if I was going to go speak somewhere and they were going to pay me an honorarium, that has to be approved by the board by contract. That's an example of, there are two different times where I'll be away from the division, one is for personal business, does not require approval, the other does require approval because it's part of my contract, so.
So I put in there, as per the superintendent's contract?
Yes.
Wonderful suggestion, Ms. Johnson, thank you so much. You okay with that?
I don't like it, but if the consensus of the board is you change it, you change it, but I don't, I don't think we should change it.
Speaking now, forever hold your peace.
Sounds like six are good with it, so.
Mr. Hill, I.
This contract is.
It's your, it's your bylaw, your policy.
Oh, I know.
The, the chair hasn't been signing any of my leave requests, so. You could interpret this that I violated your bylaws because I didn't request that my leave be approved, because it says approve the requests of the superintendent. I've not been asking for it, cause it's not required. So I just wanna make sure we have.
You haven't taken a long-term leave of absence, that I'm aware of, since you've been here, and so that's.
You're interpreting leave to mean leave of absence, not a day-to-day.
The word leave can be interpreted several ways, and that's what my point is, is leave it how it's written. And if your contract says you can take your leave, then you shouldn't have any issues of taking your personal time, or speaking, or whatever. But if you come in tomorrow and say, I'm taking a four-month leave of absence. And that's not mentioned in your con- that, that needs to be brought to the board, to the chair. That's my point. And that may not be in your contract, but my expectation is, is if you're taking a long-term leave, four months or whatever. That should come to the chair. And it may not be in your contract, and so, the way it's written today, is if you're taking a leave. It comes to the chair. Doesn't say she has to sign off on every single vacation day or whatever. I, that's my, that's my point of view, again, there's six more of you, you, you do what you want to with it, but. I think it leaves, if it's not in the contract.
It eliminates them.
It, it leaves it for interpretation of other things, and that's my point. So, your expectation is not to approve his vacation time, or if he's taking a personal day, he has that. But if he comes to you and says, I'm taking a six-month leave of absence. And you say it's per the superintendent's contract, well, it's not in there, but it's not in there saying he can't. Without. And I'm not saying you would do that.
Look, I hate you, dear.
But we're, we're doing this in general and overall.
Honestly, I mean, it's really not.
I, I really do understand what you're saying, but see, to me, if you, if you just say approve leave request, to me, that's. I would interpret that as an employee as any leave request, any, anytime I'm leaving.
Vacation.
You know, vacation, granddaughter.
Definition of what is required?
Contract. But the contract.
But even that, even said, but that's what it did say.
It doesn't say either way, right.
Yeah, but that's what it did say, so.
Right. And, and I don't have his contract sitting in front of me, but it could say, well, the contract could say, per the bylaws. Well, the bylaws were now changing to say per the contract. Again, I don't wanna spend a lot of time on, I'm just giving you my point.
Yeah, I just leave it as it was, I think.
Same as it was?
Same as it was, yeah, I think so.
Yeah, it's still.
You're still stating what you're stating here.
It still says as required, and then I just, well, what's required, that needs your signature.
Then you would refer back to the contract, I would assume.
That's right.
Yep.
So I'd say leave it the same.
Leave it the same as it was.
No, leave it as required, right?
As required.
Because then you, then you can.
Leave it, leave it as it is right now, don't touch it anymore.
Does it say as required?
No, I'm saying leave it like it was before.
Um, per the superintendent's contract, is what I have here now.
No, I say leave it like it was before, is what I'm saying.
As required?
It didn't say as required before, it just said.
It said approve leave request of the superintendent.
Of the superintendent, yeah.
And I will say to, to.
I think that was.
To this, Dr. Bergen has been wonderful about contacting me, letting me know whenever he is gone out, is going out of town, so I do know ahead of time.
So it sounds like it's working the way it's written.
We'll keep it up.
If it ain't broke, we'll fix it. Clerk, is that also in the policy, is this a repetition of the policy?
It is what?
Duties of the clerk.
So what are we doing with number two?
They're gonna do approve, leave, super.
We're just leaving it?
Leaving it as it was.
Okay, I think it should have, I liked the as required. Yeah, as, I did too, I like that wording contract in there, but that's okay, if the majority wants to.
Okay, so, well, okay, we have, we, we have contract, you want, you, you like to per the contract, you like to per the contract?
I like it like that.
Like this, okay, so I have two and one. Two and two. Two and three.
If it ain't broke, though.
Two and four, okay.
If he's been contacting you and it's been going, great.
Yeah.
Okay.
We should leave it, leave it like it is.
Is the duties of the clerk the same as a policy?
I think it's also important for us as a board to remember that this document is also. To be used by future board members as well. So it's not just for us.
Not just us, for right now, right.
We are also, uh, this is a guide for future board members.
Right. Okay, so the duties of the clerk, is that a policy? That is a policy, is this, is this wording, is that same as the policy?
It's more.
Which policy number is that one?
Page twelve, oh, sorry, that's not a policy.
So this is more than the policy?
Yes.
Does the policy go into the surety bond, I didn't think it did.
It doesn't, I don't think so, it doesn't.
Okay, so do we want to keep this in here as it is written?
I think we should.
Which policy did y'all say was for the clerk, cause I don't see it.
I can't find it.
I, I didn't make a reference.
I thought somebody said that it was a policy.
There, there is a policy.
There is a policy.
There is a policy for the school board clerk, isn't it?
So it wasn't one that was pulled? Ask the clerk.
I, I saw it somewhere, once upon a time, I thought. Or where, or is it state statute?
I remember seeing it, I just.
Or is it in the statute?
I feel like I've seen it too.
I've seen it too, I think, I actually think it's in the statute, in the state statute.
I don't know that it was under the section B for board governance.
And I think it's under the statute, is where I've seen it.
Let me see if I can find it real quick.
So do we wanna leave that?
Diane's gonna look.
Well, while she's looking at that, then you wanna move down to.
Duties.
Well, here's another code, actually, right here. Legal reference section, Virginia Code, section twenty-two point one dash seventy-six. Goes into chairman, clerk, vice chairman, deputy clerk, terms, compensation, board, bonds of clerk and deputy clerk, right there is the code with it in there.
I thought I saw it somewhere.
So if we're gonna move that with the codes, then do.
Yeah, just put it, move it with the codes and put a reference again.
And this is Virginia Code, I believe.
Yes, it is.
Okay. This mouse is too sensitive, or my fingers are just too big, it don't work. Probably make people at home seasick. Well, then, it also has. References to the chairman, vice chairman, deputy clerk, so where we're saying, see Virginia, where we say BCB CPS policy, BCB. Should we put see Virginia Code, section? Twenty-two point one dash seventy-six and? B CPS policy?
I think anytime you can reference somebody to a policy or a statute, uh, a code, that's, it's good, that's good, and you've given them every. Piece of information they can look at.
And I put this underscores, cause I couldn't find your little symbol for amp for.
I'll put it in there, if you just, if you'll highlight that underscore so that I don't pass over it, please.
Gotcha.
That's what I would do. I didn't need that in there.
I'm sure by the time you give it to me and we look over it together. We'll catch everything. I can proofread other people's work, I can trouble with proofreading mine. So. Then does the code say, I think the code says the same thing of duties of the clerk, so we take that out. And the deputy clerk. Diana, you want me to leave this code in here to make it easier for you to copy?
That would be wonderful.
Okay, gotcha. I should've asked you about that before I deleted all the other ones, I apologize.
It's alright, it's fine. It's alright.
Duties and responsibilities. Of school board members.
None of it was fine.
It's fine? I had a question where it says responsibilities, authorities, sport, regulations of the state board. What state board? Constitution of the state of Virginia and for implementing the regulations of the state board.
I don't remember.
Is that the State Board of Education?
That's, that's what I'm thinking.
Is that what it is, so should we put that in there to clarify?
As long as we can verify that that's actually where, you know, I got it wrong, I don't remember that one. But that's what I would think.
I think it should be completely out of there. Honestly. I think it should just say, members of the board responsible for upholding the laws and the constitution in the state of Virginia.
But the laws are sometimes different from the regulations.
Exactly, that's, that's what I mean, sometimes the regulations aren't laws.
Well, I'm not sure we have the. And that would be a legal question, I guess we'd have to get to answer, you know, because not, failing to follow regulations could result in the, uh, a. Removal of funding, I mean, I wouldn't wanna do something that made the State Board of Education mad and ended up somehow being. Detriment to our division.
I still think it should be out of there.
Yeah, I, I think we're responsible for following regulations, whether we like them or not.
I don't think we're going. We're not, matter of fact. No regulations, mandates, none of that, we just went through all this.
I agree.
It's not a law, I mean, we're, we're bound by the law and constitutions in this country and the state. And that's, it's nothing to do with regulations of the board, of the state board, or the. You know, board of education, or whatever they're referring to here.
Well, I think that's a, something we need to have our attorney.
Well, it may be, you know.
Before we, before we say we're not.
I tell you what, let, let's go through this tonight, let's stay on course.
Okay.
Go through this tonight, make our, um. Notes of what we are, what we want to see, and then I will make a note.
You wanna make a note up there, does this contact attorney?
Well, they can also, could go to number five and seven too. It's on back here on the.
What page are you on?
It is page, um.
What section is it to me?
Page seven and eight. Insofar as not consistent with state statutes and regulations of the Board of Education.
Right.
I think that could be taken out.
Where, which one?
Number five, on page seven.
Insofar as not inconsistent, okay, well, that is, when you see insofar as not inconsistent with the state statutes and regulations of the Board of Education, that comes straight out of. Twenty-two point one dash seven nine.
That, that's, that's direct quote from the statute.
That's a law.
Okay.
Statute.
So that is, that is law.
That is law.
Correct.
That is law.
So. So I think that really answers your question on page thirteen.
I was gonna say that ties into that.
Insofar as it's not inconsistent with the statutes and regulations of the Board of Education.
And then number seven says perform such duties, such other duties as shall be prescribed by the Board of Education. Or as imposed by law.
Correct.
So why would it say or, as imposed by law?
Because you might have some.
The Board of Education doesn't make laws, but I see what you're saying, they could have a law saying. You have to do what the Board of Education says.
Or this says perform other such duties as shall be prescribed by the Board of Education, so they could ask us to do something, or. You could also be referencing law. So, in, in, either two ways, but this whole section, um, I am like ninety-nine point nine 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 percent sure I pulled it out verbatim.
Twenty-two point one dash.
Dash seven nine, correct.
Okay.
It's, it's right out, if you just type it in, it's right out there.
Okay, so I, I, oh, I've made the note here, um, just, cause I just wanted to look into it, yeah, to look into it.
Yeah, and I think it's probably State Board of Education, that would make total sense.
Um, and then I have another question. Article four, section one.
Article four, section one definitions and requirements.
It says, that's bottom of the page. With the full intent and letter of all legal provisions. Intent and letter, I don't know that I've ever. Do we really need that in there, that's kind of comply fully of all, could we just say comply fully of all legal provisions? Section one, definition of requirements, conflict of interest. Each member of the Bex County School Board shall comply fully with the intent and letter of all legal provisions.
So, question, how is that tied to the conflict of interest form that we have to turn in with Diana? Didn't that part of that document, Diana? Isn't there a conflict of interest?
There, there is a conflict of interest, but that's saying that you're opted, I tried, I had to sign it. Um, that's saying that there, you are opted out, like, if it's on the, on personnel report, which is where I had to opt out of it. Um, it said that I was voting on every other part of, but I wasn't voting on that one. Or, I was acknowledging conflict.
And I, and I believe that whole section is actually, uh, there's, you know, the code of conflict law, or code of, um, conflict of interest law. Again, before we say we're not gonna do that, we probably need to check and make sure.
Yeah, well, my, my question was. Um, just, uh, eliminating the propositional phrase with the intent and letter.
And I would just tell you that, that's fine, I think if it's, if we can legally do that, I, I can almost guarantee you.
This is a statute?
That's not my, how my mind works, you know, with, fully with the intent and letter of all legal, so I have, I pulled that from someplace. I can probably try to go back and find it for you, but. I don't think I would.
Can I highlight it, and then we'll find out if that was a code?
Yeah.
Okay, so.
Yes, I should say not yet.
Hey, I can do that there, cool. Okay. Um, and then go down to the next paragraph. The purpose of the conflict of interest law in Virginia is to assure that the public, is to assure the public that no public official is compromised in inappropriate conflicts. I, I, for some reason, I had trouble with the word inappropriate there. I, I, I'm just saying compromised in conflicts. It's not the word inappropriate, I mean, cause define inappropriate.
Exactly.
Cause what's inappropriate to one isn't will be to another. So y'all found us eliminating the word inappropriate?
If it's code in the law, it should be pretty specific to what that conflict, conflict would be defined as.
And they do, I think when you fill out that form, it tells you everything that would be a conflict.
Yeah, so leave the word inappropriate, or can we take it out?
We take it out, I think.
Take it out, I think. I mean, the, the whole. Hmm?
I said it's a conflict.
A conflict is a conflict, exactly.
Agreed.
Rolling right along.
Can we add, if you're taking out inappropriate? Should it not say public, that no public official is compromised in a conflict of interest? Cause conflicts. It's different from conflict of interest.
Okay, that's how, we'll look if I make that change, I'll put it up on the board. In conflicts of interest.
In conflicts of interest, yeah.
What do y'all think of that?
Involving the school board?
No, it could be anything. No, it could be anything conflict of interest.
No, this, this is true.
Legal school board. Okay.
Any board, yeah.
Okay, disclosure form. Ms. Johnson O'Connell reminded me that they were due February one, not January fifteen. Okay, get the red under one.
By chair, the actual wording is by February, from the Ethics Council, the wording is by February one. So if you want to just change before to by. Because I can still accept them on February one.
Okay.
Might want to leave it to thirty-first for people like me.
You've got, you've got it in time.
And I noticed that was a typo, so I just put in a capital C there.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, um... "At least one copy of the proposed agenda in all agenda packets unless exempt by law." Was my, where we're talking about the exempt. Um, open and closed meeting, talking about putting the agenda out there for everyone. Um, unless exempt by law, clarifying that that's exempt, that we are required by law to keep the personnel report and student incident out of the public eye.
That's right.
So are we in agreement to change, to add by law to that? Any other changes on this page? Dude, I guess I could look it up, too. Where it says, and I just wanted, I thought about this just for clarification, because you know how when we go into closed session, we read the individual sections of what we're talking about? Um, with Virginia law, and should we put specific codes, put in the word specific code sections there? So that way you know it's just not one umbrella of Virginia law, but we have specific code sections that we have to comply with? I'm asking anyone who will answer me.
Well, I, I think, I think the, there is such a great deal of concern over why we go into closed session and what we do there, that any reference that someone can then reference themselves would be helpful to say, you know, not only can we do this, we showed you where, in the code, it says we can do it, even though it's on the agenda.
So should we put in here with Virginia law code section, or just leave it as it is?
What's down below it anyway, isn't it?
Yeah, that means...
Is it down there below?
Two point two dash thirty-seven twelve.
Yeah, you've got it.
Yeah, leave it just like it.
Um, and then... Again, I've, I've been reading this, I might have been reading it too much and I may be overthinking. Um, such forthin law which are to be, so, okay, that makes more sense there. "The board may consider, or the board may conduct a closed meeting only to..." I mean, we, we can sit here and consider going into closed session all day long.
Conduct, I agree.
Should that be the word conduct? Closed meetings next to...
Closed meeting only. Board may consider closed meeting only. That sentence needs to be rewritten.
Instead of conduct, conduct, yeah, I'm good with that.
A closed meeting.
Conduct a closed meeting only.
Only. Purpose specified in the law.
Now, see, in the way that...
Be only by the purposes.
For, only for the purposes.
For the purposes.
Yeah, and the way that I had done this, again, I did this like late tonight, early morning. "Any motion to go into a closed meeting um, shall specifically state the purposes of the closed meeting as set forth in the state code, which are to be, and I kind of got confused there, be applicable to the meeting."
You can do that. It, it, what, uh, we just need to make sure we're saying is that we read what the code allows us to do. And, you know, so a motion is going to set forth the, the law for what we're allowed to do in that meeting.
Let me, um, okay, so this is the, this is the one that we, this is where we're looking at. Right here. And I know enough to be able to fix this back.
"Any motion to adjourn to a closed meeting shall specifically state the purposes of a closed meeting as set forth in the law."
Motion.
Which are to be the subject of the meeting. You could just put a period after law, really. "An emotion to adjourn to a closed meeting shall specifically state the purposes of a closed meeting as set forth in the law." Period.
Then take out which are to be the subject of the meeting.
Correct.
Okay.
Because that's, that's if they listen or they're reading, because that's what we're doing.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay, so any motion to go into, do we like, I, I don't necessarily like the word adjourn, but what do y'all think about keeping that, to go into closed meeting? Or keep it as adjourned?
Adjourned, fine.
It's fine.
Okay. Um... So what, what was your state, well, how did you word it again, Dr. Mealy? I apologize.
It's, uh, that's okay. "Any motion to adjourn, um, to a closed meeting shall specifically state the purposes of the closed meeting as set forth in the law," period.
Okay, hold on, let me get, let me get there.
Yeah, right there, period.
And then take out the...
I just want a question, because I know we have to advertise that and the subject of why we're going into closed meeting. So does that change any of that? Because I want to make sure, because when we do that on the agenda, we have to say, for personnel issues, to talk about this superintendent's contract, for legal purposes, blah, blah, blah. So I, I, I just want to make sure we're not taking the need for that to happen on the agenda by changing that wording. Not saying it does, I'm just posing the question.
See, when you do that, though, aren't you saying code such and such and such and such to allow for da-da-da, you know, to allow for personnel?
But you have to advertise it specifically, from what I understand, and if I'm wrong, correct me on that.
Right, you're correct. No, you're correct.
But I think it has to be very specific as to why you're going into closed session, and then we're only allowed to talk about those very specific topics.
But with everything you read when we do that, doesn't that always cover that?
It does. It does.
And isn't that how it's on the agenda, too?
Yep.
I think that's okay. Because it's very, you're, you're saying that you're quoting the law, and then you're saying what that law refers to, personnel.
So, so I'm eliminating then which are to be the subject of the meeting?
Because that's stated in the agenda to me.
Okay.
I mean, what do you think? Do you think that's, is that obtuse, do you think, for people?
I, I, well, see, personally, I thought that whole sentence was wordy anyway, so, anything, anything we can do to simplify. And then we're going to change the word considered to conduct, correct?
Right.
And then add the word for after only, only for the purposes specified in the law.
Only for. Okay. So do we like the wording of that?
Yeah, that was, I think it's not.
Everybody okay? Okay, now, I'm going to take that off the highlights, so Ms. Johnson doesn't think she's going to do anything there. And again, I, I, I'm trying to eliminate some of the wordiness. Is this prepositional phrase? Yes, I don't remember what a prepositional phrase was. Um, of the members, is that really needed right there? Take a vote.
Where, where are we? That second paragraph. Yeah, no. No, we don't need that. "No action of the board agreed to in closed session shall be..."
And takes a vote.
Mm-hmm. Takes a vote, period. It takes a vote, period.
Yeah. Because we said, it says earlier, "No action of the board agreed to," I mean, you're talking about the board.
Except that sometimes Dr. Bergen's in there, but do, does he excuse himself before we would be voting?
Well, we don't vote, we don't vote back there, we come back out here and reconvene, we never take a vote in closed session.
I would, I would agree with you.
To remove that prepositional phrase?
Yeah.
Are we okay with removing of the members? Make sure I'm in the right spot before I start deleting. What about that last sentence? Do we really need that last sentence? "Such action shall we reasonably identify, shall reasonably identify the substance of the agreement reached in closed, in the closed meeting."
To me, it's captured in the minutes.
Yeah, yeah, I agree.
So we don't need, we don't need that sentence.
Delete it. The vote is the vote.
Yeah, we have another legal reference here to move over. I'll highlight that, is that okay? Okay, this thing is really getting on my nerves. This is really, really getting on my nerves.
I can appreciate that.
No, I can too, because I, I don't, my glasses out, but I'm sure the people at home are probably getting seasick with it going in and out. Participation at the meeting, um, section three.
Well, section three is policy BDDH, so, and, and, you know, really, you would have to change a lot of this because, you know, time is set aside for limited to twenty-five minutes, well, it's not anymore, or three minutes, that's not correct anymore.
And that was actually, that's what we're talking about that's on the agenda for May to approve, correct? Well, since we, didn't, didn't we do that by consensus, though, at the organizational meeting?
Um, not the entire policy was changed. Help me out, Dr. Bergen, I know you explained it in an email, but you changed the, uh, the cumulative time and individual time was done by consens, consensus, but the policy itself was not updated. So the policy itself was brought before the board last, at the, um, April meeting as info with those changes that were done by consensus in January. Will come back before the board in May for action. But as of right now, because it hasn't officially been approved yet, this is what I was saying earlier, it's still the original.
So why would we not, and I can make a motion or whatever we need to do, of anything that we agreed to, and going forward, anything that's approved in our board meetings, the clerk should come and change it immediately in the policy.
Should update it.
Should update the policy. So I don't know if we can do it with just consensus, or if it needs to, but...
Can we do that without having to, because we just did that big, long notation of revise this date, revise this date? Do we have to reference on there that it was revised again if you go in and change the policy?
But she can just add that and then bring it back to us and we vote on it. I mean, it should be a simple vote of...
Information and action, whatever's changed.
That's right. Should be a very simple vote. I mean, we've already gone through, and the only thing we're changing is that one thing. So, I mean, and to me, we, it should be coming to us anytime we're making policy changes that affect it, for her to update it at the bottom to keep it current.
Okay, so, are we going to? Well, then here's the, here's another big question I have. I don't think that we're going to be able, since Ms. Johnson's going to help us out and make this pretty for us. Um, well, we'll go through it tonight, have it ready for her to do, and then I'm anticipating voting on it in May?
Yep.
As opposed to voting on it tonight? So at that point in time, once we vote to approve this, then you make the motion then? Does that flow better to everyone?
I think so. I think that makes sense to do it.
I'm good with that. But I do have a question on BDDH, because we said that's what it is. So when I printed the two, the documents that you have provided, there were two BDDHs, but they're different.
One's a reg.
One's got an R, isn't it?
One's the reg, yes, you're right, Mr. Hill, one is the reg. And the BDDH that was up for info at this most recent board meeting combined it, it combined those two and eliminated the reg.
Okay.
And that's what's coming, so those are the swish.
That's what I wanted to verify, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
And I know one says policy and one says rules, but they were both identified as BDH.
Correct.
Okay, all right.
Yes, Board docs labels it rules, we call it regulations, I can't change how Board docs labels it.
That's fine, yeah, I just want to make sure, because we don't need votes, and it sounds like we weren't agreed to that. Okay, perfect.
Madam Chair, may I ask a question, too, on the, I'm talking about notating when it was revised? Would you like me to put on a separate page, instead of the cover page, all the dates revisions? Because that's going to get really long.
You're, you're going to have to. You're, you're not going to have a choice.
I didn't want to assume without the board agreeing with that.
Okay, would, Mr. Hill had suggested that there's appendix at the end?
Absolutely, I was going to suggest that.
Okay, okay, perfect.
Um, section three.
Section three, to me, keep the first paragraph as kind of a nine, and then see policy DDH. Because all of this, the second and third paragraphs, um, the second paragraph is, would have to come into compliance with BDDH.
BDDH, okay.
Yes.
Like that, and then eliminate that first paragraph?
No, I'd say that's kind of an introduction, you know, or something like that.
Then...
The second paragraph has to go.
Okay, then, here's another question. Do we need invited and encouraged, or can we just put encouraged?
It doesn't matter, maybe we could do it.
Yeah, probably ought to leave it invited.
Let me see if I take this out a little bit, the, like, shrinking it to... So this whole paragraph here?
Yes.
What about after that, during?
Yeah, that was, that's a new paragraph. I mean, not new today, it was in there. And that's something we have to...
So just, I'm just eliminating this much?
Yes, and then we have to decide if you want the third paragraph there, which now is the second paragraph.
Uh, yeah, I think we should.
Yep.
Within the meeting space.
Y'all just take all the fun out of it.
I think we should leave it.
Madam Chair, do you, do you want to add, I'm sorry, do you want to add anything about digital content as well?
Meaning?
Videos being played. And flashes come before.
Okay, to me, so you're talking about public comment time?
I'm sorry, yes, ma'am.
So if they want to play a video, I think we can't stop them from doing that. As part of their, their message or their speech.
But here, but here's the question, though, um, because there have been a couple of requests
Request.
that I have denied.
But wait a minute.
For two years.
But that was, they were not going to be here, right?
Right, and, and it wasn't the person who signed up, was it? Mr. Hill, you're thinking?
I've had all those scenarios. There, there have been those scenarios and more. Yes.
As of now, they're not allowed to?
I'm sorry?
As of now, they're not allowed to, or they are?
Just, just for public comment?
It's for, it's...
Just for public comment time only?
Yes, ma'am, and we did reach out to the attorney, it's attorney before making that determination that not allowing.
Just public comment time, and no...
Correct, verbal comment to the board only.
You sign up, you, you come here and you speak.
You come in here and you speak, it's speaking time.
If you have anything, they give it to you and you get it.
Yep, yeah, I say we leave it like that.
And not include the digital thing in it?
So should we include it on there to not, do, do, do? Wait, what? So should we include it on there to not, do, 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 would, would it make things simpler for you? But this, but the public doesn't, I mean, this is our, these are our.
Right, so then it doesn't really matter, right?
But I will, I, I'm working at everyone's pleasure, so let's.
I mean, I wouldn't see a problem with it as long as it didn't ruin the time. You know, cause some people aren't good at speaking, or maybe they haven't, you know what I'm saying, I mean, I, I mean, I know what you get, I know what you're saying, you know, but.
Once you allow one.
It's, it's gonna go over the top.
I, I, to me, if they want to come and speak publicly, that's, we're inviting you to come here and to speak to us directly.
Right, right.
We'll be glad to listen, but I think you're opening up just.
You're up, yeah, you're opening up Pandora's box that you won't be able to close.
And also, people can send the, I'm sorry, Dr. Mealy, they're welcome to y'all's email address.
And, and if they have flyers, they can hand them to me and ask me. They can actually hand them to you, get here prior to the meeting and hand them out while we're at dinner.
Yeah.
They could be here for us.
And then, I know we've had problems with, the person who signs up is the person who has to come to speak, I can't give my slot to Georgia.
No, you can, however, both parties must agree to it, I have to hear from both parties that a substitution is requested. So the person who has originally signed up, so Mrs. A has to come to me and say, I want Mr. B to speak in my place. Mr. B then has come to me and say, I am requesting to speak in the place of Mrs. A, they have to name each other specifically, they can't just say, I'm giving my time to whomever.
That was one problem we had, is that somebody showed up and wanted somebody else to speak.
Well, if there's time available, we always make that offer to step up and.
Yeah, no, I mean, during this person's time, they, they wanted to show a video of another person speaking. Was the problem.
But somebody can give someone else their time, they just, you have to hear from them both.
Yeah, you can have a substitute.
So somebody, one person cannot sign another person up, you couldn't sign your wife up, Georgia, excuse me, Ms. Harrison could not sign her husband up.
Yeah.
I, you know, each person has been done, that's why I have.
So can they do that at the meeting, like say someone was up there speaking, and the next person in line says, hey, I, I, you in my time?
I believe that would be the chairman's call, but I believe at that point, if they opted not to speak, she, I'm assuming, so please forgive me, would go down the list, which if that was the case, then there would be a vacant spot, uh, an, an available slot at the end.
And that's what I've been doing.
I got you.
And, um, uh, this thought just occurred to me too, if we have, we still have our code sections in there. Where we're putting in here blank, C policy, B D D H. Then we won't have to update this document because the code will be updated.
Exactly.
So we don't, uh, that will be easier, so we won't have to be putting all the revisions there.
Did you wanna put something about video, or no?
Just leave it alone.
Just leave it alone? Okay, going down to the agendas. Here, um, this paragraph here, members who desire to have an item added to the agenda should submit their item to the chair, chair of the board for inclusion. This whole policy, this whole procedure changed.
Right, it's, it's, it's number two here, uh, or not number two, excuse me.
Well, no, we actually changed that to, at, at, at the organizational meeting.
Yeah.
So, do we need to reward this to that? What, what is, what do you have there, Dr. Mealy?
Well, what I have here is on page two of our, um, norms, we have what we need to do. They, board members request to add an agenda item may be made to the chair at least two days prior to finalizing the agenda.
And, but then we also have it now to where you guys are getting a draft of the agenda at about, at the same time we are. The drafts are actually coming out a little bit earlier than what they were, so we changed that, so kind of narrowed down the five days to just a couple of days by the time we get them. So do we need to keep this the same, since we've changed that whole procedure, if everybody's seeing a draft and then contacting Mr. Hill or myself with any changes at that point, or is this just for the addition of an item, or do we just need to? How do y'all wanna keep this the same, and then do we need to make reference to everybody getting a copy of the draft agenda now? Ahead of time? I don't mean to make things more difficult, trust me. But do you see what I'm saying?
You're saying adding or changing from?
Yeah, because we, we have that change of policy now with everybody getting the drafts earlier.
And that's policy.
And that's, that's what we've adopted, like, I, I mean, do we make it a policy, or is it just?
I believe it was just a procedural change.
It's a procedural change.
I believe so, I don't think that's in, in an actual policy, I think it's just a procedural.
It's, it's just something we found to make it.
Let's, let's talk through that, because i- if each one of us were to add two different things to the agenda, you then go to a five, six, seven hour meeting, and we can't do that.
No, I agree.
You're gonna be earning this big money, you make.
Well, I know. But, I mean, there needs to be some guidelines of, a- and I like it cause of the procedure of, we're presenting you the agenda. If there's something on there that you have a question about or want to add, then we can, it's no guarantee. But if we come in here during the meeting, and we're passionate enough about it that we want it added, then we can vote on it as a board to say, I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda and add that part. But there's no way in the world we can go and say, everybody can add whatever they want, two days before the, I, I mean, that's, that's not fair to Diana to have to pull all of that together.
Well, yeah, a- and I agree with you that, I think my, uh, understanding of, of that has always been, um, if I made something two days before, um, I, I, I mean, me, I'm understanding that there may not be room on that agenda, but, you know, it would probably then go on the next agenda.
Oh, yeah, definitely, yeah, I just don't want it to be.
That you assume that it will go on.
Twenty-three, twenty-four.
Assuming that everybody can add something two days before the meeting, that, that's, that's not really.
No, I, no, that isn't fair.
So do we, what do we do with this paragraph?
Well, if you've changed the policy.
We already changed it.
Do we leave it either?
The chair will have the final say on whether a request would be included in the current agenda or carried on to the following meeting.
I, I say leave it, and then we go about.
Policy, or the procedure change.
Yeah, that we've said.
Okay, do we need, do we need to put the procedure in here, or just leave it? I mean, that, that, that was my question. Do we put the new proceed, do we leave it at this, or do we use the new procedure?
However, y'all want it.
I would say the new procedure.
I would, I would say the same thing, Matt.
If this is old, I mean.
So, so, so this whole paragraph right here, we'll put in our new procedure? So I can delete this whole thing and put in here for the new procedure for you to add?
This document is for us to reference our new procedures.
All right. Yeah. That's dope. I didn't get the red under last. Um, the agendas and accompanying material.
And that, I, I will be very honest with you, that, that is just something that I saw in several other counties.
Well, and, and, and here's.
It can be in, it can be out.
The only thing I had with this one, the board member should review the agenda and accompanying materials no later than three days. Should we say receive as opposed to review?
Well, I, I'd like to go even a little bit deeper, because, and I mean, no disrespect to anybody, but the last school board meeting, it really pissed me off that we were forced to make a six hundred thousand dollar decision that we found out detail that day, literally during the meeting. And so I don't know if it needs to go to the facilities, or to the budget committee, wherever it lies, there needs to be some form of communication from staff to those committees to say, hey, this is coming, this is what it's gonna cost, here's what the details are, not opening a bid two hours before the meeting starts. So, to me, I didn't have any time to study, to call and ask questions during the week, to understand anything that I was being asked for, and we handed a six hundred thousand dollar blank check, and we don't know what we're getting for it.
Well, even the facilities committee was told it was five hundred thousand, and we didn't know it was nine seventy-two until that night as well.
And that's my point, you know, I mean, because.
Whether that was just a miscommunication, or, or, or whatever we'll call it, you know, cause I'm in, yeah, I was under the pressure it was five hundred thousand up until that night.
And, and Dr. Bergen and I have talked about this, and I've asked from now on if, if we could, if, when you're getting the bid proposals, to get them two weeks prior to the meeting, so we can have time to have that information.
And it doesn't have to be on the agenda for it to come to us to say, hey, we put this bid out, here's what we've got, our plan is to get with the chair and have it on X meeting agenda.
Right, yeah.
But, I mean.
And, and, and I'm, I, and I'm, I understand where you're coming from, cause I kind of felt the same way.
Well, now, we gotta, go ahead, whilst we say now that we do have committees, you know, I wanna be more involved in the bid process. You know, instead of, like you say, all this stuff happening prior, and then it was kinda, it, it just delays stuff if you do have to make a change in it.
Right.
You know, it kind of eliminates a, a middleman.
But we've got to stop the, it's on the agenda, and we need you to make a decision tonight, and it's in a hurry, well, you just gave me this information. Six hundred thousand dollars is a big decision. Right.
Yeah, I think we all can agree that we need more information, and we are deserving of receiving very detailed information.
And with enough time to review it.
Exactly.
Especially for those of us raising children, working full-time, and.
Yeah, there's no question of that.
But my question is, going back to this section two, the board member should review the agenda now. I know there are times when I don't actually have or am able to review it myself personally, three days ahead of time. My question was, should that instead be review with see? And it's up, in, in all honesty, and where, where, where you're going with, with what you're saying, that's, that's administration's responsibility to make sure that we have the right information in a time.
Before it's even added to the agenda.
Yeah, yeah, that, that's not up to us as far as our reviewing or receiving the, the agenda, that's.
Well, you can just take the three days part out.
If you, well, it sounds to, I'm sorry, it sounds to me like, um, the issue is the receiving of the information. Um, again, this was just taken from several different counties who had this in here, so we don't have to keep this in here. If the issue is you wanna receive the materials and everything, then that's what we should just say. I mean, we don't have to say you have to review it three days in advance, you, you know, you may not be able to do it.
Well, and as, well, actually, we get the agenda five days ahead of time. So could we, my, I guess my question is, it was a simple question, should review be the word receive?
I don't even think we need it.
Don't you think we need this at all?
I mean, that's my thinking, cause when we look under our powers and our duties, that to me.
Tells you there, yeah.
Tells you that that is your duty to review the agenda, to spend the time.
So eliminate that whole paragraph?
Just eliminate that, yeah.
So.
That's just my thought.
Yeah, well, a- and I'm good with that, but I think we need to be very, it, it needs to be a rule. When we sit down with Dr. Bergen and Diana and you and I to create the agenda, the data needs to be available and read it, ready for board members to view when it post, because it's posting the next day.
And, and Ms. Johnson, if I'm not mistaken, haven't we talked about this, that you try to make sure everybody has their reports to you in time before the drafts come out? Are you having trouble with those deadlines, with everybody meeting those deadlines, with the exception here and there?
Um, if I do, then it's just because of an extenuating circumstance, um, I think the last time was budget items, but we knew we were, we knew Mr. Hagler was waiting on budget documents, um, so no.
Okay, but there are times when the agenda is posted, and you go to the agenda items and the documents supporting presentations, or bids, or whatever, and it's not there.
I have been instructed not to put presentations on there until the day of the board meeting, the presentations, the document, I'm sorry, Mr. Hill.
Could, could you put them on there, um, for us to see and not open to?
Okay, I could, and then I could move them after the meeting to the public.
Yeah, could, could we do that? Would that be possible?
Yeah, because that gives us time to review and to start asking questions, instead of this bombarding of, you just showed me twenty slides, and I'm trying to think through the whole process and not.
So just for, if, if, yes, I can do that, so that you all know when you're looking at it, it will be under the executive content of that agenda item. And it's where now it says public content, it will be under executive content.
Okay, got it.
Until the day of, and then you'll have to move.
Until, yeah, until the day.
Until, until the, when, when we get our drafts, but when, or until they go, how, how, can you do that, give it to us? And would then make it live in a different way to the public?
By law, I have five days after a board meeting to make anything public that the board received. So if I do it the Friday morning when I come in after a board meeting, put it on public view, I am within the law to do that.
Okay. But if it's available and it's ready, we don't wanna hold it, I mean, publicize it, right?
Yeah, no.
That's what I'm saying, executive content.
No, it's just for us, just for us.
You're saying if it's a final.
Yeah, if it's a final document that's going to be presented, let's make it available.
Wouldn't that make sense to present it publicly?
Save you from having to move.
Yeah, comment during public comment.
Comment or ask questions regarding the presentation.
That's right.
Wow, see, I would, having done that, I would always wanna do that, you know, give it to you first, and get your reaction from that before I received, um, comments from the public about it.
I know, that's what we were talking about, is that we want to receive these documents, any PowerPoint presentations, the board needs to see it. We need to have it available for us to review several days prior to the board meeting.
Right, but, okay, maybe I misunderstood, was the make it available public?
Yeah, what, what nine? It's after the meeting. She had until after the meeting, until that Friday after, I don't see any need in holding it until after. If it's ready that Thursday when we're gonna meet, why not make it available?
Oh, I can do it any time, Mr. Hill, I was just saying by law, anything that's given to the board, I have by.
How, how do you normally do it? Do you normally put it, you put it out there?
Um, it's for the, now, are you talking about documents or presentations?
Presentations.
So we were doing it right before board meetings, that was changed to the morning of board meetings.
But, but I don't have time to view that the morning of a board meeting, I mean.
Well, I know, but, but we're saying making it available to us prior to.
And I'm good with that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, and then public the day of.
Yeah, that, and I.
And, and, and this is, yeah, and, and this is, cause I, I really want us to start, when we're doing our awesome job of the informational one month, and so the presentations go with the informational things, and then by the time it's available to the public, they can come the next month before we make our vote.
So the day of, it will be made public for the public to access.
That's my understanding.
I can do that, I can do it however you want me to do it.
Let me ask a question, so the day of, after the, uh, CEO or anybody gives their presentation, or before? I mean, that's what I'm saying, as a director, I would have wanted to present it to you, receive your input before it got released to the public. You know, you can release it that day, you know, I, I present it at seven o'clock, you can, you, you can release it at seven oh five if you want.
That's a very, cause I mean, it'd also give them time, if, if we request changes. So that way accurate information can come out, so I'm fine with it not being public until.
I'm okay with that, I just wanna be able to see it days before.
Okay, so executive, keep it as executive content.
Yes, I agree with that totally.
I tell you, normal pro, keep, keep the normal.
I'll make sure, you want it in executive content when the drafts come to all of you on the, that Tuesday? When do you want me to put it in public content? I say after it's been presented.
After it's been presented, so the day after is what I'm thinking.
Is it, is this gonna be something that we would be voting on at that time, potentially?
No, it'll be informational that will be here next month.
Yeah, it's usually informational items on staff.
This is the presentation.
Now, sometimes we push it, but I, it, it, we, I, I would, I would like to get to the point where we're not pushing it anymore, staying with our procedure of informational one month and then voting the next.
Yeah, if it's informational, if we, if we really just hold to that and say it's informational, then no, we would not be voting on it.
If we make sure we're able to get public comment before.
Exactly, exactly.
We will the month that we would be voting for.
I just think it puts a burden on the staff member, because.
Yeah, and, and I think, I think it would be.
We always worked with, we gotta get this to the board first.
Yeah, and I think it would be a courtesy to them too, to give them time to change every. Yeah, and I think it would be a courtesy to them too, to give them time to change the presentation if they need to before it's made public.
Questions answered, that'd be great.
Right, yeah. So we found with the pro, procedure as it is, it's posed that it's public, um, public, the day after.
I think we all need to understand too, that the presentations that we get on Tuesday can be changed and updated up to, including the day of presentation.
Right, but, uh, but I think we need to have, so we're not blindsided like what we were last month.
Yep.
Was that okay with, would that work? Can you make that work?
Absolutely. Just as a reminder, if I could say, Friday, the next day, legally, I have five business days to post. So if I'm off that Friday.
Wait, you want to take a, want to take a long weekend out there?
I'm just saying.
Is that a leave or a move?
I'll get her to sign off on it.
You know, really messed up here. Okay, there we go. Um, so agenda and accompanying materials, now that we've clarified, the procedure that we would like, is everything else okay here?
And, and I just wanna say, I'm sorry.
That's fine, go ahead, Dr.
Um, I, I know, I, we would have to look this up and it's not a huge deal. Um, but I don't think we have to record who seconds a motion under Robert's Rules of Order. I think we just have to do the person who makes the motion. But just a tidbit of information.
If we can get into a higher standard of being able to say who has seconded up.
Yeah, I, I'm just saying that's Robert's rules there.
And going down to minutes of the meetings. Um, minutes of meetings, written record of board's deliberations and actions, do, is that a little bit wordy?
It's not moves, isn't it?
No?
Okay.
Um, and then here is a question that I had. Go down to the last three lines of that same paragraph. To any citizen of the Commonwealth desiring to make an examination of such minutes during the hours of the school board office readily open, regularly open to the public. They're on board docs and on the internet now. I mean, somebody from Nebraska can look it up at three o'clock in the morning.
But we also have residents who do not have internet service.
We did, but, but they can go to the library and get it too. I mean, I'm saying, I mean, uh, uh, if, if you're gonna come and get a copy, then you can come and get a copy during school hours, but we can't say, we can't say that we're limiting it to the Commonwealth now too.
It says to any citizen, it's any citizen of the Commonwealth, yeah.
I mean, for the majority.
I don't know the answer to that. I, I don't know if we're legally bound.
Somebody from Iowa walks in and says, I wanna copy your minutes. Yeah, I mean, but, but, but to me, this was just before everybody, this was written before everybody or the majority of the people had internet access to be able to look it up whenever they wanted to.
And it doesn't say that we're printing it. It, it just says that it'd be made available. It doesn't say how we're making it available. So if somebody calls the clerk and they're in Nebraska and they want her to print four hundred and fifty page document, uh, no, it's online and here's the link.
Yeah, so that's what I'm saying, but do we need to, to any citizen of the Commonwealth desiring to make an examination of the minutes when the school board office is regularly open to the public? Do we need that part anymore now that we do have it online?
Or, give them an option, or go online to Bedford County Public Schools.
I wouldn't take it away, cause there are people, my, my husband has, you know, deals with people who, who
Okay.
just aren't internet users.
So.
There are people out there like that still.
That's my goal.
Do we need to, to, to limit it to citizens of the Commonwealth?
That's my goal.
Any citizens of Commonwealth desiring to make an examination of such minutes during that, I mean, I, I, I say leave it in there, but at the end, just put.
Okay, or, or access.
B C P S, whatever it is, yeah.
Access.
We're online at B C P S.
Online, no, board docs is something different, different, isn't it?
Um, you can access it from the district website.
Well, how about if I do this?
There you go.
That's perfect.
There you go. I like that. Very nice.
And Ms. Johnson, since you're so wonderful at everything, I'll let you put that in right there.
Perfect.
I think this thing is possessed. So we're looking at the details of the minutes, which Ms. Johnson's fabulous about doing. Um, any other comments?
No, she does a great job.
Yeah, she does a great job.
Okay, procedures for certain board meetings. I've been here six years. What, are, are these the special call meetings?
That's what I was thinking.
So should we call, should, should they be special, should it be called special call meetings as we call it to be consistent? So we just go change.
Procedures for special call meetings.
Special call.
We've got a policy.
I'm not sure what that code is.
And this really speaks to a hearing.
Oh, is this a hearing?
It says the by, by, uh, the board by majority vote of members present may conduct a hearing on its own initiative. I, I know, again, this is something that.
Yeah, the only hearings that we have are in closed session.
Yeah.
On our conversations, or the individual hearing might take place in open meetings.
The others are called special call meetings.
Those special call meetings.
I just think special call meeting and.
And, and then we have to kind of fix this because we're not, we don't do hearings, you know, the hearing is gonna be on our agenda.
These are B D D?
B D B.
B D V.
Boy, dog, boy.
X, Y, Z, P, D, Q, A, B, C? Okay. So are we, what are we doing with that? We leaving it as?
Change the other word.
Does it just change the words to spec, from certain meetings?
Yeah, go down a little bit, you gotta change the other word too.
Special call meetings.
I think it's section, or the article.
I don't think we need that second paragraph at all.
Do we need the second paragraph at all?
I don't think so.
What do y'all think about eliminating that second paragraph?
What do you think?
Hearings conducted under board policies and regulations, that's the one you're talking about, Ms. Harrison?
Just take it out.
Take it out? We have take it out, have two take it outs? Three take it outs, four take it outs? And then, so then we're getting down here into section one is the whole hearing section. Take it out?
That's what I'm thinking. I, I'll have problems with it, cause we have, um, we have procedures for that. As how there is.
That's already included in our closed session.
Right, right, I would delete it.
Delete? Everybody needs consensus with that?
Cause we have that already.
So then, if we take away section one, then do we even need the heading?
Yeah, take it out from there.
This is written when we didn't have standing committees.
Mm-hmm. So we have to put standing committees in, but we have a policy.
Just take out all that verbiage and you've got a policy already.
Exactly.
That's true.
And reference the policy.
It's B C E R and B C E, I believe.
Okay, may I have the number, the letters again?
I, I have B C E R.
B C E R.
Right, Bravo Charlie Echo. And Bravo, uh, B C E R and then just B C E. One's a regulation, one's a policy.
B C E, B C E R.
Correct.
May, may I suggest you put just the policy before the regulation because the regulation always accompanies a policy.
Okay, tell, uh, I'll highlight it.
Next meeting, she gets a regular now.
And at the next meeting, everybody bring Ms. Johnson lots of chocolate. She has her.
And I think we just need to give her a day off like that Friday, so then screws her up for the Monday when she has to post all this stuff.
So am I eliminating all this verbiage underneath that?
Yes.
Yes, you are.
Yeah, and I just wanna make sure everybody knows that I'm gonna bring a recommendation on B C E dash R. Um, and you guys tell me where it goes. It's either in budget and finance or either under the facilities committee. But any upcoming money request or dollar request should be presented to that committee with details before being added to the agenda.
Yeah, I know, I had, yep.
Okay, so.
That's why we have the committee.
Okay. So we'll, unless you disagree.
No, I agree.
We'll need to pull that policy, review it in our committee, make the request or the recommendation, and then bring it back to the board for a vote. Does anybody have any preference of where that rule belongs? Does it belong with budget or does it belong with facilities?
Be both?
Both.
I mean, it could.
Yeah, I think the, I think the facility, I'm sorry, go ahead. I, I think the, the fin, the facilities committee needs to agree that yes, this is in fact warranted and the finance committee needs to.
Here's where the money.
Right.
Okay, alright.
And I don't see any reason why those two committee, well, we could, we'd have to advertise it, but meet as, as one when all that information was available to, to help staff. Can we do that if we had a, a meeting and had the two?
Next week.
You know, that would save staff having two different meetings. I'm sorry.
A co-committee?
Yeah, I mean, what do y'all think about that? When that information is ready, that we have a co-committee meeting.
As long as we advertise it, we can.
Yeah. It'll just save staff having two meetings.
And I put a public.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Um, so we have the code cited, cited there, liability insurance.
Liability is, um, policy, B H E. B A G, I believe, B H Hotel Echo.
Hotel. Somebody's brain is on vacation.
I know, those are the actual things that she used, that she used.
Okay, I'm sorry, what were the letters again?
Uh, B, H, and E. Those are the military.
Boy Hotel Edward.
No, Bravo, Bravo Hotel Echo.
Okay, so then do I need this section one underneath?
No, I believe it's all in there. I believe it's all in there.
That is the policy, so we'll eliminate that.
This is so funny.
Legal counsel. I put in there C Virginia Code because it refers to it down here. Do we need that paragraph underneath it?
No. I don't think we do.
So we don't need the board may employ legal counsel to advise?
Oh, I do think we need that. Yes, we need that section.
You're talking about B A G, right?
Okay, so then we'll, but we'll put, we'll put, make sure this code section split the other code sections.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
Okay. The next one is. I have the bylaws. Is the next one, bylaw adoption, the feeling is.
Yep, 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 yep.
Okay, this actually, I would like to move as the last article. And y'all look at that first paragraph there. Um, because if we are going to come back with these again and vote on them next month, we have the board at two regular board meetings, do we need to reword that?
Can't we at the board meeting, um, call for a suspension of the rules? For that particular item?
I don't, but if we're gonna do it, let's, I mean, let's make the change if we're gonna do it as opposed to calling for a suspension of the rules that we just created, cause that would kind of look funny.
Yeah, but.
I mean, to, and, and the only thing, my question is, majority of the vote of the board at two consecutive regular meetings, so do we have to vote on these at two meetings? Proposals for the bylaws for the amendment or repeal of existing bylaws shall be adopted by majority vote of the membership of the board at two consecutive regular meetings. One where the adoption.
It wouldn't be voting twice. I think that's what you're saying.
Yeah, that, that sounds like you're voting twice on it.
I agree.
So that, that's why I was wondering about one where the adoption amendment or repeal has been introduced as an informal item. Which we have already done technically though, but we didn't do it by vote, we did it by consensus. And the second where the adoption amendment or repeal has been voted on as an action item. Do we, it sounds like you're voting on the same thing twice.
Well, I think what, um, my intention was here was that one time it would be introduced, the second time it would be voted on. And actually, I think you can take off consecutive because it might not be consecutive. You know, you might introduce something in April, but staff requires more than thirty days to finish whatever it is and then we vote on it in June instead of May. So I'm not sure consecutive meetings need.
Why don't you just say, shall be adopted by majority vote of the membership? Because if it's on the agenda as an action item, we're not gonna vote on it until the next month.
The next time anyway.
And then it'd just be a majority vote.
So eliminate of the membership, still at two meetings?
Uh-uh, shall be adopted by a majority vote of the membership of the board, period.
Period.
Take out at two consecutive regular meetings. And actually, the rest of it.
Get rid of all that.
Okay, so I can eliminate the rest of that paragraph. Whoops. Tab? Anything else with this? Suspension of the bylaws, any changes with that? Correspondence to the board. We have this covered under our norms and procedures. Do we want to keep this wording or do we want to bring in the norms and procedures wording?
I say the norms and procedures.
Make it consistent.
Yeah.
I say eliminate this. Now here's the question. Do we want to, would, do we want to do a section two to this? To put in our norms and procedure about social media? Would this be a good spot for the social media?
Yes, definitely.
It's a great idea.
So can I ask a question on the social media? Your number sixteen on the norms.
So you're number two? That's a good, what is that?
Does this include like or commenting, like congratulations? Do we just want to avoid us being on that page at all? A, a, and I'm asking because we shouldn't be out there answering questions that are going to staff on policy or procedure. But like teacher of the year being announced on the Bedford County Public School social media. I think it's important for us to be able to say, congratulations.
Absolutely, I posted it today.
Well, but this says. This says we should.
I, I disagree.
Well, that's what I'm saying, I, I wanna make sure.
Do we wanna clarify that? Which one is it? Number sixteen?
Yeah.
See, the little number system works. Should the official, to, to, to maintain superintendent wishing to react?
Or comment upon first.
How about we just say or comment?
Or comment.
To re, react, wishing to comment.
Yeah, cause the last time we said, well, share it to your page and then comment.
Yeah.
That's what this is saying.
Yeah, it's saying, it's, but you can react and hit the thumbs up or the love sign.
Congratulations.
Be careful, don't hit the angry sign. Or the sad face or whatever.
My only point was, I just don't want us going out there answering a question going, oh yeah, this is in policy, blah, 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 blah. That's not for us to do, but to me, to be able to like or say congratulations, that's different. But it doesn't give us, we're not allowed to do that based on this policy.
Correct.
How do, then how do you want to reward it? Wish, wishing to, um.
I just think you could say Board members wishing to react or comment upon posts from the BCPS-owned social media sites may do so. And not just copy to their page.
But, but, but we're also, we have this here to keep things from getting out of hand, um. So, yeah, so if, if we're putting on here that we're gonna comment, um, we should limit what we're.
Comment regarding policy and procedure?
I know.
Day-to-day operations. I mean, I don't know how to word it.
How to word it, yeah.
And I guess my question would be too, um, can we really do that? For, you know, First Amendment rights. I mean, you know, you're allowed to, can, can you really say to somebody, you can't go there and say something? I mean, I understand what you're saying. You're not, I mean, I think you, my opinion is that I think, I'm not a lawyer here. That you probably could say whatever you wanted to say, as long as there was a disclaimer that you're not speaking to the Board.
Yeah, that's what I was like, maybe.
Okay, so then how about, um, Board members?
And I agree with Mr. Hill, you know, you know, let's not do the day-to-day operations and that, but I, I don't think we can actually tell each other we can't do that should we want to.
Official, share on Board members platform after the official place to share at school. The official, the Board of Control, Maintain by Superintendent and Board Members Wishing to React or Comment Upon Posts From BCPS-owned Social Media Sites May Do So.
In a personal capacity?
By stating they are acting in their individual capacity.
But I wouldn't think that would.
I'm gonna write this down and tell you.
I wouldn't think that would apply to the congratulations things.
Right, yeah.
You know, thumbs up, whatever, but if, if there is a question about policy or procedure, you would have to say, you know, I am not responding, uh, on behalf of the Board. This is my personal opinion.
By stating. Acting individually?
Yes.
You can't read my handwriting, call me mom.
And Georgia, I promise I didn't see that you had liked or said congratulations.
I know.
But I saw it posted and I was like, I wanted to say congratulations and then I'm like, well, I just read this, so I can't.
I do it all the time. I'm always reposting things. I figure that's the purpose of my, um, page.
Oh, I'd definitely repost it, but I'm, I'm saying actually on the school site.
Okay, so they may do so by stating they're acting individually and not as a Board. Or copying and sharing on their own personal.
Yeah.
Yeah, acting, not acting on behalf, or commenting on behalf of the Board.
So, but still keep this section two here for social media. That work?
Yeah, I, I think we have to get to social media and then. Diana.
I am.
You should take the rest of the.
Complaints regarding employees and students.
Change here.
Complaints to Board Member.
Yeah, no, I think that needs to go with the superintendent.
It's not for us to. And there's a process in place that if it comes to us, we don't need to be a part of it early on because then it comes to us at the end. As far as the appeals process.
So leave this here. Okay, I'm just going through and asking. Um, let's see. Complaints, uh, where, where'd it go?
I know what else.
Complaints by the public. During a Board meeting, the Board shall not honor a request by individuals or groups. Do we need to have groups there since we don't have a specification now of groups in public comment time? Four minutes straight across the Board. You've lost your identity, Dr. Mealy.
I have, geez.
Do we need our groups? Since, like since, since we've got four minutes across the Board, whether you're an individual or a group, do we need the specification of a group?
Do we not have this?
I think.
Yeah, that's gonna be in your public comment time.
Yeah, but I think what this is saying is that we do not allow those groups to come in and single-handedly talk about one of our administrators or our teachers.
Right, correct.
In public comment until it's been through the proper channels of.
Okay.
They're going to the principal, they're gonna go to the superintendent, et cetera.
Then here's, here's my other question. We were talking, we just said proper channels, like what's written there. Do we, should we define the proper channels or do we leave it as proper channels and leave it up for assumption that somebody's gonna know what they are?
I'd leave it as proper channels.
It's, it's different. It could, different channels, yeah, it could be depending on where it started.
End of situation.
Yeah, I'd leave it like it.
Okay.
I think if you're gonna, you wanna make a complaint about an administrator, faculty member, whatever, um, it's, it's upon you to, to find out what that, what that procedure is. And that would start, I would think, with a call to the administration.
Lastly here, for this, for now, let's take a couple of things we wanted to run by you guys. Notification of the Board, any changes here?
No.
I didn't have.
Now, when we run this by you guys, and, and these were just some thoughts I had, um. Because I remember how it was when I came into orientation and learning all this stuff from the first time, and I'm sure you were overwhelmed and you were, all you all were overwhelmed. Do we need to put something in there about FOIA regulations so a new member will understand FOIA and that it's with their emails being FOI, FOI-able? The fact if you text from your personal cell phone, those records are FOI-able. Do, where should we put it then?
I think you put it under the orientation. That's what your purpose is, right?
Does it, does that go under orientation? Does that go under email communications?
Let's see.
I mean, you have different areas where it could go. It could go under the communications, what we were talking about earlier with emails, or it could go.
I know, if your, if your purpose is orientation for new Board members, I think that's what I heard you say. Then, again, I think it should be with that information so that the Board member can refer to this and have it all in one spot. I mean, I'm not sure if I was a Board member and didn't know that I'd never go look someplace else about my email. If that's your purpose.
Well, it, it's, it's a purpose of that and it's also a purpose of having a document where we can go back and refresh our session if we need to.
Oh, okay.
Um, cause.
Gotcha, gotcha.
You know, after a while when you've been here, you kind of forget some things. So, can I just make the notes at the bottom of this? Okay, so we do want to put something in there about FOIA under the orientation area. Is that what everybody's in agreement to? Okay.
And really, we should, as another thought about where it's going, we should be reviewing these once a year. You know, as the Board is, in January, as the, the new Board members are seated, we should review this, just.
Then should we review it actually prior to them seating, so?
Yeah, I just.
Like, not, not this year for us, since we're doing it so late in the year. But say next year, new Board member will come into place, so do we want to review it, say, November? Happy Thanksgiving.
Yeah, I, I just think it, we, we need to have a regular schedule of reviewing it to make sure that we're up to date. We don't want to add anything that we did with social media this time or, uh, a policy has, you know, popped into place and we no longer need a section. I just think we, we should have it set somewhere that we, it's, it's a conscious, deliberate, we have to just review this. And it could be just a reading at home and coming in and anything to stand out to somebody.
Yeah, just reading it over, saying everything's okay, not even bringing it to a meeting of. Or just to say that we have read it and nobody's fine with it, consensus thing. Okay, so I'm making some notes for Ms. Johnson. FOIA regulations for email, personal email and text under or, orientation.
Do we have a, a policy around FOIA?
I don't think it's natural policy, it's required by law.
So it's just a law?
It's a law.
I know, yeah, just do it every year.
Point number two.
Two.
No, I, in the, uh, as an administrator, we were always, like, every year.
To me, you just, you put FOIA, define what it is, and then use that link of the training. And there's a, I mean, there's a site that tells you everything that fits into under FOIA.
Um, and here's something else. Where could we put this? When you send out the first email to the group, it's an announcement. When you reply all to that email, it constitutes an unadvertised meeting. Where can we put in there to make sure, put it under orientation, do not reply all to group messages? Could that go under there? Okay, and on any of them, so do not reply all to emails, to group emails. Then we had a couple of these. Let's see, we got the one through six in there. Um, we got the social media, we've numbered them, we got number sixteen in there. And I tried to look through there and I thought I saw it in the bylaws, but again, Ms. Harrison made the comment too, it all kind of ran together after a while, what you read where. Uh, we have seventeen and eighteen about, about visiting the schools and contacting the principals. Do we want to have, want Ms. Johnson to create us a separate section for visiting schools and having both of those norms in there? Or do we want to put them in somewhere else?
It should be in there. I'm thinking.
I think it's a pretty important thing to do.
I think it should be in there.
It should be in there. So do we want to create its own section?
Yes.
Yeah, yes.
About visiting, um, under, or, or do we want to put it where it said some of our obligations, our duties, or close to that, close to the duty?
Close to that and creating.
Okay, so, close to duties.
It's not a duty and an obligation. I mean, a whole couple.
Duties, uh.
And should we also, I, I'll let you finish that. I have a question.
Can I put my numbers on here if I give you my list that I've done? Okay, thank you very much. I'm gonna owe you lots and lots of trouble.
She says an extra day off with all her day off. So, just kind of thinking about, um, our duties, our responsibilities. There's, there hasn't, there isn't anything included in here in terms of our particip, participation in the superintendent's evaluation.
And, and actually, that was.
Is that on your list?
It's, it's on norms and protocols, number twenty.
It is?
It is. The Board will evaluate the superintendent on an annual basis. Goals will be determined in August, followed by mid-year review in January. And an end-of-year evaluation no later than June thirtieth.
Okay, so all Board members will be participating? Okay.
So where, where do we, where do we put that in?
Yeah, I, I think we need to.
Yeah, there, there, well, there are, there are several in here that haven't made it here yet, so I wanna make sure, because if we're gonna combine them, let's combine them. So let's make sure we have everything covered.
Okay.
Um, where do y'all think we should do the evaluation of the superintendent?
Let's see.
Be the duties of it.
I mean, it's, it's part of our responsibilities, so should it go, go under the responsibilities of the Board? Okay, so.
Section seven.
Norm.
Number. Hold on.
Twenty. Under duties. Is that right? Number twenty under duties of the School Board? Okay, as we just took care of contacting the principals, encouraged to visit schools, we've talked about professional development. The Board will monitor and update it on the progress of the Division's strategic plan on a periodic basis. Where should that go? Do we have a section, was there a section in there for superintendent's responsibilities? Should we?
Didn't we put a section, another section under powers and duties that we were gonna put something else there? We said we, we wanted to give it, Georgia said we'll give it another heading because.
It was like section two or something like that.
Yeah, I mean, I'm in, um.
Yeah, it would be section two.
I'm on page, I'm on page eight of, of it, and I think we were gonna add something and Georgia had, Ms. Harrison had said, let's, uh, put something, a, a separate heading there.
Okay, so where were we?
It was page eight.
Which, no, tell me what page it is now.
Oh, yeah, that's true. Uh, this is, um, under duties and, um.
Duties and powers and duties.
Powers and duties of the School Board.
Yeah.
It was right after, it's in the first few pages, actually.
The original page was seven, but that's not gonna help you in.
It's the. It's two pages after.
Okay, what's it after?
What is it after? Let's see.
It is after the legal references.
Yeah.
So it's up, up at the beginning.
Yeah.
Yes.
Way up there.
So we're up yonder.
We're going up yonder.
Orientation.
No, keep going up. I still think keep going up.
Yeah.
Gotta keep going.
Oh, uh, pages here in a minute.
No, I think we're getting there.
But aren't these?
That's it, that's it right there. Number seven.
Number seven, per duties prescribed.
Perform other duties, and then on that page, I thought we had put something scroll down at the bottom of that, that we were gonna add something and. Ms. Harrison said we'll give it another heading. I guess we didn't.
Yeah. So.
Well, you could put it there.
I was gonna say, we can just put it there.
But, uh, uh, maybe additional duties or something, although, um. That is required. I mean.
Where, okay, so where, where are we?
We're under duties, um.
But what are we trying?
Legal references, and we're, what we want, what I'd like to see us consider and include is that part of our duties is to, um, evaluate, participate, evaluate. The superintendent during both the mid-year and his annual evaluation, that we, as a Board, um, we are participating in that process.
So we just did, we, we made a note at the end. What was that? Highlight this.
We're gonna put that under responsibilities of the Board.
Yeah.
The, the review. So that will be, that will be norm twenty.
The superintendent's evaluation. I think now y'all were, you were trying to find the, a, an appropriate spot to place the, um, monitoring of the strategic plan.
Strategic. Right.
Okay, you've got the superintendent.
Yeah, we already, we already had that resolved.
Right.
Yes.
Okay, so now we're looking for the, the strategic plan, because that's actually the duty of the superintendent to bring back that. Where should we put that? Monitor the strategic plan. The Board monitor be updated on the Division's strategic plan. Do we have a, could we create a miscellaneous? Because we have the updated strategic plan, um, we've covered basically that we're gonna meet, uh, if I look at the other norms and protocols.
Well, that would follow, follow under duties and responsibilities too, when it really, I mean.
Well, the only thing, if you put it under duties and responsibilities, remember that's pulled right out of the code. So I don't think you could put like number eleven without a, a subheading, because you gotta let people know what number eleven is in part of the code.
And I thought that's what we said before. So. We'll figure that out, but we need to figure out where to put the strategic plan. Again, do we want to do, do we want to do a section of, um. But this is for us, it's not necessarily for the superintendent. But this is for us, it's not necessarily for the superintendent. Um, but it is in our norms and protocols, so where should we put it? Should we make a miscellaneous, should we for various items, 'cause I'm, I'm trying to look here.
To me, it's part of our responsibilities.
Right, how about the se- section seven?
Even though it's not covered, it's still.
It's under our, I, I would agree with Mr. Hill.
Yeah, I don't know where else would it fit.
Well, we have, we have duties and responsibilities of the board members, page thirteen, and we have uh, the code on page.
Then let's put it on thirteen.
Page seven.
Yeah, let's put it on the other ones and not, and within the code.
So it has authority, it has responsibilities, you could add a number six right there.
And then just include all those that you mentioned.
Evaluation of this, pull, pull exactly what we have here out, except add, you know, that uh, all board members something, instead of well, the board will evaluate. So I'm, I'm assuming that means anybody can come to, you know, everyone should be at that.
So put that there, so where, so that's where we're gonna put it, the, the sponsor changing plan?
Duties, responsibilities.
Yeah, our responsibilities.
Under our responsibilities, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, norm, norm twenty, duties of school board members, uh, what did I do? I didn't do anything.
That's all right, I just talked about a whole different thing. I probably missed it.
Page thirteen, so you can kind of know.
Thanks.
I put that one with the strategic plan. It's twenty-one.
I mean, I think anything that's on this norms and protocols that start with board members can be added right to these responsibilities.
Yeah, but if you look at, well, looking at these norms and protocols to, let's see, page two. We've gotten this taken care of about the chair and vice chair meeting with the superintendent that's been taken care of. Board member request to add items to the agenda, we've taken care of that. Um, supporting documents, be placed on board docs by the end of the day on Friday, but we've taken care of that. Um, board members will not respond directly to presenters during public comment, we've taken care of that, correct?
Policy.
Yeah.
Concerns regarding the day-to-day operations will be referred to the superintendent to handle appropriately, concerns related to the action of the board will refer to the chair to handle appropriately. Any concerns directed to all board members will receive a fir- affirmation that the community member's concern has, has received a response. Where do you want that to go?
I thought.
Some of it, some of it has been covered, some of it hasn't. Um, as far as the concerns regarding the day-to-day operations will be referred to the superintendent and handled appropriately. That we have not covered. Do you want that to go under the, our what we've been doing on page thirteen, under our duties and responsibilities? Are you, do y'all see where I am with the, on page two?
I think that's okay, yeah.
So. It's the norms number, let me put that there. Ms. Johnson, I'm trying to make this as least confusing as possible. Okay, board members and superintendent, superintendent will maintain open lines of communication. Do we need to say in the same place?
Yeah, I agree with Mr. Hill, a lot of these can just be plugged right in there.
If it has board members attached to it, then.
Yeah.
Uh, board members communicate directly with superintendent regarding requests for new information. Man, y'all are easy tonight. Policy B C E, we've reviewed annually, we've taken care of that. For media inquiries, we've taken care of that. We've taken care of one through six by adding it in there, we've taken care of all of these. Does anyone else have any questions, any additions, any changes?
I don't think so, I don't have a chance, I do not.
Okay, so let's make this perfectly clear that we are going to be at Ms. Johnson's mercy for her to get us a final document. She will get it to us as soon as she can and then we will review, have it reviewed and vote on it at the May meeting, is that correct? Is that what everyone is understanding?
There was one item you wanted me to double check with legal counsel on, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am, I, you, you will see plenty of notes in here.
Thank you.
Uh-huh, and I'm sure we will be talking a lot over the next few days.
We will.
Which I'm looking for.
Me too.
Anything else? You'll have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Holbrook, you'll have a second. Second by Mr. Daniels. Any discussion?
Oh, discussion.
All those in favor, signal if I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Meeting's adjourned.